It's a town home one and a, a single family. Yeah, just in different, that's more of the single family that were kind of. Again, colors can change, you can go to there.
And the single family.
As soon as Lyle comes back, I'll tell you what our goal is.
Those are the townhomes. So that would be.
Okay, they are townhomes.
Those. So, there's, there's two sheets, one of the single fam- like, and then one of the townhomes, if you can.
No, no, give it to Lyle. Oh, Lyle's got one.
Okay, so, before everyone starts asking a million questions, the goal tonight, so with the mixed use, as everyone knows, we had to put in a development agreement together. So, to make it easier on everyone, we're trying to create this spreadsheet that says, okay, let's go through every specification we want to be able to put in the development agreement, and let's talk through it, and then Liam can finish the development agreement. So this is talking setbacks, elevations, density, open space, I mean, we're gonna hit some of the big topics, and this is just a starter conversation so that they can start moving forward with the development agreement. So does that make sense? Do we wanna start maybe on how you did? Well, do we wanna start on density, maybe? Start there? And then go through maybe the list that I sent, and we can talk about each piece? I'm not sure. I know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go find it right now.
You want us to take us through it then?
Yep. Let's see.
Can I get next copy of that?
Sorry, can I have?
No, you're fine.
Let's see.
Pair of those two, just so I don't have to open my phone. Can't see on it. Already. Another one of the horizontal ones?
Here? Oh, here.
Switch, yes.
Can I actually have those two?
Thank you?
Sorry.
I got one I can put together, so you think I didn't for now or now?
Sorry.
No, you're good. There should be plenty of copies there. There we go.
I printed them off on my computer, do it.
Yeah. Okay, so let's quickly go over this first top sheet that I gave you, the density. Let's make sure everyone's okay with the mix that they have, the density and the percentage of open space, so that there's no confusion going forward. Do you wanna explain this one a little? Jeremy?
Yeah, well, we're just now getting these tables put together. You'll see some of the stuff on the actual conceptual plan over here too. This is addressing a lot of the questions that have been coming up, and the questions that are gonna need to be, well, the items are gonna need to be in the development agreement anyway. So, um, the single family lots, if you look at the, the plan here, that's these lots here. Uh huh, yep.
Cam, do you wanna come up and join us?
Yeah, oh, as I say, you're welcome to.
I know, but there's a chair here, we got a seat there for you. Come here, there's a chair right here for you, buddy.
Okay.
No, if you, um, I guess if you wanna look at the units per acre, we're at four, and I know in your, your plan, it couldn't be any more than six. If you look at the design specs on the concept plan, you can see some of how the percentages are broke down, broken out.
Here, you can have mine. I just need to build this too.
Yeah, so, this is one thing. So this right here, he's asking about the lot size on the single family. We made this little, this is why, that can be hard to read, and I apologize, but I'll leave this here with you. This right here is a little detail of our smallest lot, and the frontage here is fifty-four, and they range between fifty-four and sixty. You can see the, the one oh nine deep.
They're all a hundred and nine feet deep? Or do they range?
They can, they can range.
This would be the smallest.
Yeah, this is the minimum.
Okay.
Uh huh, okay.
Some of these are like, almost one and a half times that size.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, one thing that I would like to do, uh, he kinda misunderstood me, I'm glad that he put this on here. We will put with this information, a detail probably labeling each lot. So we have every lot, you wanna go to it, you can see.
Give us like, the actual dimension site plan that has all the frontages?
Yeah, so.
Or the building pads over there, yeah.
I think that's what I'd like to do, just so it's all real clear. If you, if you have a lot you're wondering about, you'll have the size, and I can get that over to Geneva probably in the next couple of days, if that's something you guys would like to see ASAP, so.
As long as we know this is the smallest.
This is the smallest.
Yeah.
And so, anyway, we have ninety-one, this may change out here, ninety-three on here. This is cha- I changed a little bit of this the last couple of days, so these numbers are just maybe a couple off, one to three, you know?
Ninety-three?
Mm-hmm. One of the things that we're, we've sent this over to Rocky Mountain Power, we've had plans, our engineers have had plans where underneath these, I think I'll just address this right now, underneath these power lines, where we've been able to build as long as we're fifteen feet from the top, which I know doesn't seem like very much, but we are in, right in the middle right now of getting Rocky Mountain Power on this site, and looking at this plan, and so we'll have those details. Can you, can you see this one right here? You can see a little bit more. And the poles are where the green is.
And you're allowed to go under them, so.
Yeah, we're just waiting to get the, the final.
What's the condition of the piece? I mean, they can come in? For the property owner of this underneath there?
Right, and, and so, we're in the middle of figuring that part out.
I understand you're going on anybody with the house where the pole is.
No, nope, yeah, yeah, we can't, mm-hmm. Sure, sure. And honestly, I, our engineers had some, um, information on that, but I just have gone right to Rocky Mountain Power, and we're looking at this site now, I wanna hear about what was done here or there. We just wanna know what can be done here, so this could change a little.
You might have a swap, a bigger swap.
Yeah, I know things have changed to where with, used to be where there could be nothing, you know, so many feet on both sides, but that has changed a little bit, but we're, we're waiting on that. So we've sent this plan to them, and, uh, it doesn't move quite as quickly as we'd like, so, anyway, we're in the process of that. So that, this could change a little bit.
This should be looked at too by the building official. The house is underneath, 'cause I think there's some building code items in there.
He's already seen it in the.
And he's okay with it?
Building code related to Rocky Mountain Power?
No, the house is, structure's underneath it.
He's seen it a couple times.
Under the power lines?
So they're not worried about electromagnetic fields and all that stuff?
I would think whatever Rocky Mountain Power comes out with will be, this had been studied very.
Drivers on that over our, you know, piece, and Nate didn't say anything when he saw it.
He's aware of it, that's all.
Yeah, we'll probably end up beating this up pretty good.
Oh, no doubt, yeah.
We're all.
Right.
On the same page.
You know, like you say, things have changed, and it's been a while since I've been in the code, but I know the code used to address this.
Yeah.
And that's why you had the big wide open swath.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, that's a good point, so.
You're right there.
We will, um, let you know as soon as we start figuring out exactly on that.
Yeah, if you have to do a big wide open swath, that's gonna eliminate some lots there.
Sure.
That'll change your whole configuration.
Sure.
Or you can bury it.
What's that?
Or you can bury it.
If you give me a small micro loan.
Holy crap.
Is coming to, uh, come on with your raging between, now this active adult community lots, you see, this is the fifty-five and older?
Yeah.
This is a new terminology.
I know it. So that's this portion here. We've, we've moved them, we've moved them all over the place.
Hey, they're trying to be kind, Lou, active adult community.
Hey, this is active adult?
Yes.
What, inactive adult community?
I'm not sure what that.
Lou, this could be your future home.
Lou, the inactive adult is the nursing home.
Don't talk about that stuff. No, my, my question is, it was, what was driving your decision of what proportion you would have of those versus the townhome?
That's a really great question.
Could be adjusted.
Yeah, I was personally, and always have been, we've had this land for a really long time, and I've always been a little bit overzealous on wanting to do this active adult thing, you know, on, well, actually a little bit more than this. What has driven this, and we've moved these all over the place, as we've gone and looked at other developments, we've tried to get them to where they can be a little bit more secluded. So the location of this now is kind of, before we had it like in the middle, and then we've discussed it till we're blue in the face on how to get them into their own area. Now, as far as the number of them, we, talking to the biggest home builders in the state, and one in the country, looking at this, they have like zero appetite for these, because there's, they sit on these. I feel like they can do quite well here, but we've, that's the reason for the number of those, and even at that, like, we've had two builders say, we don't want those, but we'll look at everything else.
So you're, you're looking at market?
Yeah.
And I can echo that, I know we talked about that previously, like, there is not much want for the active adult community.
The other thing we had talked about is having some, uh, common area and open space for them in their chunk, and I noticed you've got plenty built into the, the townhouses, but none for them.
Yeah, we, he, when, when he was changing this, I think he.
You know, I mean, or I'm going, there's some common area where the.
So they can feel like it's their community?
Just sort of, we're not talking about tennis courts or anything, but at least some common.
A little hangout. Okay.
Pavilion or something.
I see him over something.
Because I think there would be a, a desire to have something like that, where they come out of their house, hobble out of their house and go visit with somebody.
Hey, they're only fifty-five.
Active. They probably play more pickleball than the people in the townhomes as well. Oh my goodness.
Uh, we had, he's, uh, I had my engineer actually working on this earlier today, and so he needed to clean up a little bit over here. I believe we had some trail going out, but you're right, we had nothing built in just for them. I've struggled a little bit with this portion, this is the only part of this that I'm just, yeah.
I would think you'd want some common. Cause I, you know, I'm just thinking of their social interaction.
Right, well.
And they're not, all they're gonna do is see the other guy's garage and driveway.
You're, you're right.
Thing, I'd think maybe, even Jeremy, and I know you've gone through many iterations of this, but if you swi- switch these two, put this on this side.
All the parking stalls?
No, no, no.
Are these, are these parking stalls here?
Well, I'm just thinking, in the sense, then move this here, then you could use some of this as their open space to push, you know? I'm just thinking if you're getting some sort of community, I mean, all you really have is this, if you swap them. But I know you've probably gone through many renditions of this.
Like I said, I admit that this is probably the part that I've, we've been wrestling with.
You can kinda put them anywhere, it's not, you know?
I, and that's really after about three or four different locations for them, we have settled here feeling pretty good about. They still, some of the appeal of that is want to be.
Away from.
Away.
I just noticed that you've got three of those options for the townhouses, and none for this.
That's a great, great input.
Sort of skewed a little bit.
Okay.
I would have put one for sure, this.
Okay.
One of the things that I, the, here, down in this bottom corner, looks like you're not running that road all the way through? This lower road, you're not coming all the way through towards the single family dwellings?
Oh, it's probably just a miss.
You mean twenty-three hundred?
No. I think that's probably just a miss. He's saying, this doesn't look like it goes through, but I think it's just a miss on your drawing.
Yeah.
Alright, so you're planning to run that through? It'll show the blocked off.
He's just talking this.
No, that's the, that, they take the left turn there.
Right, he's talking that.
Right here.
Right here, we're drawing, we're drawing, right here. The reason being, the reason I bring that up, okay, is if that's the case, all you need is a sixty-foot length right there for the fire truck to turn around. And then you can take the rest of that off, and use that as open space.
I need to ask him, he may have done that.
Um, I guess that was just a mistake.
Well, what you do is, it's an alternative hammerhead, you come down and they turn this way, and then they can back up.
I would, I would probably not eliminate that option.
No, cause there's that road that runs.
Cause there's the road right here below it.
No, this, this road, this road.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah, but I'm talking about this up here.
That'll be there, that will be a potential for this land, but.
Right here, where you run that circle.
Talking about right here.
Right there. Looks like it's closed off.
Yeah. Looks like it's a den.
If you're driving this way, you'd come to a stop here.
Into a wall or a fence or, I don't know.
They did design that on purpose to kinda create that.
Right. But the thing I'm thinking of is, obviously it's up to the fire department, but I know all they need is a sixty-foot length to turn around, okay? And so by doing that, I mean, it looks like you're running that more than sixty feet. You may be able to pull that back some, and then create that corner into your pavilion.
Well, you should check that all together, cause that's a narrower road, and they, the fire truck may not even be able to turn on that. I was, I feel like it was probably.
You don't have it anywhere else in through here, so it just, you know, like I say, all you need is a twenty-eight foot radius, interior radius on those curves, and they go right there and back up and out. They just back up, and then. Right, that's what I'm thinking, so.
You could. You could delete this altogether, have them come in this way and make this your open space.
I, I do think.
Well, they have two exits, they have to have two exits.
For that piece, a central place that's open makes.
Okay, let's leave it at that, and then your engineer, yeah.
Let me, and all, you know, as soon as we start changing that, we'll give you some ideas.
That's great.
Yeah, now's the time to.
So in that same area, the only thing I, I would mention is this road right here, I live on a road like this, and people speed down these like crazy, so if there is some way we could like throw another traffic circle in here or something like that to break up the traffic.
Well, a little dead end.
For now.
For, yeah, for now.
For now, but.
But it will be a thoroughfare sometimes.
And, and the people who live on eighty-two through seventy-three are not gonna feel like they're in a neighborhood anymore.
Once.
Roundabout somewhere along that stretch.
I'm just saying to consider, I don't think we can require, I'm just saying.
Let me take a look what makes sense on it.
Yeah.
Traffic what?
Calming.
Calming, yeah.
That's what they call them, traffic calming.
They calm in traffic.
No, no, no.
I get flare ups.
Well, like I say, that's what they call those roundabouts, traffic calming devices.
Especially if you end up doing making this area over here a, uh, open space for the fifty-five and older, having something there to make sure traffic going by there slow would be nice.
Yeah, and you're right with these having frontage on that, there's.
A lot of them are going to have current residents.
Well, I actually understand what you're saying, because I know there's been a lot of complaints already of people coming to church here on this road.
Yeah, gotta get to church on time.
Right, seriously. Okay, so active adult, you've got our comments on that, now townhomes.
Did you have a comment on the active adult?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay, well, that's in, and I'm thinking dense, well, let's go into that maybe, cause that's one of my questions, cause in each of these, we need to start talking about setbacks, design elements essentially, and then open space and what city owns and what we, you know, they own and maintain. So if we're just picking apart the active community piece, that's one thing we don't have a product for, is like a fourplex attached. And I love the attached fourplex.
Well, I've visited a couple of these, and some of the nicest ones I've seen are in that form, and that's why those are like that, but.
And that's where mine comes from, is cause you go up to Cherry Villas in North Ogden, and that's the best adult community around. It's very nice.
I think those are more popular than the, the single detached, little small cottages.
You think they're more popular?
More popular, I'd go for, I don't, I wouldn't ever live in anything with a attached wall, anybody else. You, you're, you're talking about two different mindsets.
Right, and I don't know what they'll be thinking.
Outside versus I don't want a wall that I share with anybody.
Right.
And those are two totally different mindsets.
Yeah.
And, and you, they, they both exist.
Which, yeah, we have both in our.
And I would say the more common product right now that's being built are these fourplexes.
Yeah, and that'll go for like ten years, and then it'll go bad.
And you're prob- you're not wrong, I don't know. I also think from an element design with your mix of townhomes, you've got these fourplex buildings, then you've got these attached, but I mean, it, not that smaller patio homes wouldn't fit either, but you know, you look at a design as a whole, sometimes they're more cohesive.
My preference, I would never live in a house that enjoyed a wall with anybody in it.
I'm indifferent on that.
But you're not putting a hundred, you're not putting three hundred of these in either, so your number's only twenty-four, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it could be up a little bit, but the, the point is, it's not, it's not cannibalizing the whole development.
No, I.
Right.
No, no.
And I feel like we get more bang for our buck when they're this way, but I mean, and, and maybe they get rid of some of the single family, and there's more, I don't know. Cause there, you're gonna get three, you're gonna get six adult patio homes.
This could be accepted through a development agreement.
Right.
How could those?
My preference, I vote that.
Right, yeah, that's true.
We don't have anything by multiple community ordinance that allows attached.
Right. And, and you're exactly right, and that's on my thing to talk about, because that's gonna have to be something you guys agree to, otherwise it has to be different.
I, I can see both sides.
Right, and I can too.
I would not wanna give up patio.
And I don't wanna give up the patio homes, and I feel like this is the best use for the patio in this community. Yes? Yes, soundproofing, and they probably have to be fire rated.
They definitely fire rated, but there's no additional, there's no additional.
Yeah, the demising walls are gonna be different than your normal.
Fire rated, at least, so you've got an extra layer of sheetrock no matter what.
And it goes from the floor all the way to the ceiling, all the way to the raptors.
Yeah, sheetrock.
Then suddenly proximity is a real issue.
You can't have any penetrations.
There's a difference between connected walls between young families.
And old people. Yeah, and people that can't hear.
All you can hear and hear is jeopardy, you know?
And it's done by six P M.
That's how they turn up their hearing aids.
Lou, you can't even hear me in the meeting, you won't hear your neighbor in these units.
They're all deaf, so they can turn the juice up as long.
Let me, let me say this, as much as I've struggled with this product, we're definitely open to suggestions, and we can go and.
I just think in this product, it, it fits the best, because you take these lot sizes, and no matter what, I mean, they could essentially build patio homes on the sizes of these.
I, I will say this.
It's just a nice product in this mixed use.
It matches better the townhouses.
And that's how I feel. If this was a, a regular piece that was coming to us with five acres, I could see that piece, and I know Darren's wants this, but, but in this kind of feel, I, I think it fits a little bit better.
I think we oughta look at something that shows these separated.
Okay. I'm just afraid then we get, they're gonna come back with less units, basically.
Yeah, I was just saying.
They're gonna say, well, now we're doing eight.
There are some nice, like, like Jamie was saying, you could have patio looking homes for some of these options that are on here, and, and then.
Have you been to Cherry Villas, or?
Right, on single family.
And I've been to two, three farms.
Three farms, yeah.
And.
You don't like it?
I like the, I'd rather have a patio home than a fourplex.
And that, that's the battle, is this is an opinion.
Yeah.
And so we're.
Well, it's actually an ordinance.
Well.
Well. But the, but the view on the green, I've been to the green farms as well, and they don't look like patio homes, just by the way they're built.
No.
It's hard to even tell that they're connected, honestly. Right, yeah, they're, they're just so staggered.
Tell that they're like.
It's very attractive.
In a fourplex way.
Well, they can look very nice, it's just.
They look like single family.
It's like we're saying, it, some may hate that, some may love that.
But you get twenty-four families there, and you're done. All I'll give you is twenty-four people that like it.
Yeah.
And I think we are gonna still be sitting on these as our very last thing to go still, but.
And that's, I just think in this type of project, it makes more sense.
I agree.
I can agree with a, if we were just doing a patio home community on five acres that someone was coming in, totally detached, I can get that. But where you already have the townhomes, you already.
I don't wanna loosen our grip on the concept of patio home.
Well, and this.
For the sake of this project.
Well, and this is different, this is different because we have a development agreement for this one. So anything that we want to alter from our typical ordinance, and that's why we're sitting down today, because if there are any alterations from our regular setbacks or ordinances, this is where it has to be defined in the development agreement, and it will make it not a next step for someone else that comes in and says.
And I don't think we're gonna have too many of those items.
Right, and that's what I'm hoping, you guys have done good so far.
I was agreed in the correct mixed use, how does it mean?
In for what?
For all of these products.
It reads to just follow the ordinance unless described under the development agreement. Detached.
Detached.
Yeah, our fifty-five and older is, oh, yeah.
I'm talking about, this is mixed use, whereas mixed use.
It allows you to, you, yeah, to do our townhomes or patio homes based on the ordinance.
But.
What are you saying? What are you?
You want us to know what the ordinance is?
Would you work with the mixed use ordinance? I think there was like, so many per acre.
Yes. Oh, yeah, and no, like the townhome, because that isn't an ordinance outside, that is specified in the mixed use, but like the patio home refers to our patio home ordinance.
Right.
That's what I, that's what you guys told me in the development agreement, was that we revert to the patio homes, or the adult family.
I'm, I'm just saying, how does the mixed use spell?
That it goes on our ordinances unless specified.
As far as what Lou's saying, like, let's not let this be.
Yeah.
I think because of the development agreement, if you feel like this can be okay, we can do that. But if we need to change this up, we can take a look at it.
I would like to see a plan for the little central zone in the middle, less units and individual detached.
Okay, let's see that plan, then are we okay to move on from the adult?
Yeah, we're good to.
Hold on one second.
I'm not fighting you, Darren, I, I see, I see side, okay. I don't need you like Lou after me.
It's the developer in her.
So, if this project were different, I might, I, and I don't, I don't disagree with you, right, I don't disagree.
I would like to see what it looked like with a little central common area, less units detached.
Okay, as long as you're okay with the less units, where I'd rather see twenty-four units than I would him come back with ten units.
I think we're going to, it's.
And maybe that, then maybe that helps them.
If that's only gonna help me, but I would just.
As long as you're okay when he comes back with ten units, that no one's like, well, that's not.
I get nervous talking to all the home builders, like, we don't want those, so I might be doing those, you know what I'm saying?
Well, Lou will have to buy one, and Darren will be soon to follow.
I think they can do good, I just.
I'm optimistic that they, in Far West, they would.
I kinda, I kinda feel like that too.
I just can't believe they would.
I mean, it's the only twenty-four in Far West.
Well, and honestly, if I hadn't been through Cherry Villas or whatever it's called, I would probably be with you, like, who wants an attached? But that is a very nice, well-kept.
And we've had it in these after the one out in Syracuse, um, kinda more by business. It, it might be, they are, that is a beautiful.
They're all based off of daybreak anyway, they're.
But this company, Leisure Villas, comes through and builds specifically this fourplex product, and they have like gre- no, all green farms isn't, but there's one in West Haven, there's one in Syracuse.
The more I hear that, I mean, maybe this, we could.
You know, why not take a look at it?
I've got all the notes here, let me.
I mean, maybe good with this product and the internet and the units, but I'd like to see what it looks like.
So let me summarize the active adult community piece. Basically, you're looking at where you can incorporate more open space and detached. So that's on you, okay, perfect. Now let's move on, single, can we go back to the single family for a minute?
Sure.
All I wanna talk about on single family is setbacks, cause I know you guys maybe wanted something different than our code on this one.
The only thing that we wanted different, because we're trying to keep the density the way that it is. I want to put something like that, when you're talking these small homes, you see how this garage is not up underneath the home? It's off to the side without the living quarters right above it, this is like a much nicer looking, so I'm trying to, I wanna have it be affordable, but get like the nicest affordable looking layout we can, and so, right now, you got, the code says that we can go eight on each side for the side setbacks, we're asking for five. That's one of the only thing, one of the few things I feel like we're asking different for the development agreement, so, so instead of sixteen between each home, we would have ten.
And that is, in my world, and Greg's gonna say, she's a developer, in my world, ten is very standard.
I'm surprised you'd say three.
We're doing ten on another one in another city.
Remember, you're up for renewal tonight, so eat your words. Our fifteen is fourteen and ten.
Okay, so we already have, we already have conceded ten on one side of the house.
Right, yes.
So it's not like that's a blow us out.
I don't. I don't feel like this is like really extra aggressive, I just feel like it'll allow us to kind of keep some density. It's such an interesting thing, talking to the home builders, going through the development, everything, trying to not pass, trying to have something that's affordable, keep it affordable, let it sell, accomplish all of that, have it be a decent quality so that it's not like, oh, this rundown small home, but I think if we could get those setbacks to be uh, ten total of.
It's, the, the, what drove that decision is you're trying to avoid this cookie cutter factory.
Right.
And by, by requiring one to be larger than the other, you break up the monotony of the distance between houses.
Some of the, yes, yeah.
That was the rationale for it.
But that's in the residential, in our townhome, it's eight and eight, it is not, it's not offset.
I'm talking about, you're talking.
Or, I mean, sorry, 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 not townhome, single family in the mixed use is eight and eight, it's not ten and fourteen. Cause we looked this up.
These are eight and eight.
Yeah.
And so we're asking for five and five.
Yeah. We're talking six feet, we're talking one length of you.
Your neighbor stretching out your windows.
And that's for affordability, okay, for affordability, that's what the state's pushing us to, smaller lots.
I know.
Okay.
I'm an open space guy.
Take this.
I am too.
So in our residential mixed use, it is density to be not more than six units, lot width size to be determined by the development plan, front setback twenty feet, side minimum of sixteen, rear is fifteen.
I just, I like, as far as what the product's gonna end like, I, I like what we can do by moving the garages over, this is much better looking than what.
And I don't want to have a crappy look for six feet.
I don't, I don't have heartburn with five.
Okay.
I'm doing that in another city, that seems fine.
That if you don't have monotonous construction, so you've got them not only closer together, but the same thing, every single house, straight walls, split space, flat surface.
But for our moderate income housing type stuff, you're gonna have to get used to.
I live on Far West Drive, so I don't have to worry about it.
Let me give you, let me give you a little insight. If we as a city don't present something like this, the state is going to force it on us.
Oh, guaranteed.
Guaranteed.
And it's not like they're coming and saying zero setback, you know, I think ten feet is, they can still have a fence, they can still have room to have their H V A C units on the sides, I mean, that's much better than saying, oh, gosh, there's some states, some cities that are five feet, or altogether a zero property line.
We have a zero property line project I'm working on right now, and it has some pros and cons to it, but yeah, we have some.
The nice thing I like about the five foot is you no longer put your boat and your trailer and camper and all that of this up there, you don't have room for it.
They park it in the street.
Well, that's where your H O A comes in.
No, I'm just came that up. I, I'm for it.
I don't have a problem with five feet.
Okay, I'll, I'll see.
It just gives us a few more options.
I'd rather have, yeah.
I want to get a variety of homes, kind of like you see here, I, I don't want it to be cookie cutter, I know what you mean.
I have seen the, oh my gosh, it's the same. Bang, 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 and they're almost on top of each other, and it's, it's the cookie cutter look.
But you have to.
That bothers me more than the space.
Well, and that's why I think this should probably be fine, because I agree, I want to keep this density, and we have products that can go smaller, but they, they, you can't. Yeah, the other kind are the homes that have the garage, right? Like underneath like the main living space, and so those are very cookie cutter, so, um, and.
But even at, at eight and eight, they're gonna be the same, you know what I mean?
They're gonna be, this is a, this is not what
that much.
A lot of people are comfortable with, yeah, if I had to choose, I wouldn't and all this stuff, but it can come with a pretty clean look. Uh, he, you're not completely wrong about.
This is gonna look cookie, cookie cutter.
Built completely.
Every mixed use is going to.
Are you gonna sell lots and?
It's the real world.
Yeah. It's the affordability world.
No, we're going to sell all these to a builder, they're gonna control every single one of these.
That's why we want to set some stuff up, because then the builder's bound by it.
Right, and it makes it super easy.
Is this the builder you're using?
No, uh, we are going to use these guys for a portion, at the very least of these.
They did good work.
Yeah, uh, there's a chance, obviously, they want to, they want to look at the whole thing, uh, D R Horton's called you, they want to look at the whole thing, so we, I asked them, I'm working with them on some other projects, if they would just send me some elevations of similar things, so we could just start getting our eyes on.
Just because I asked him to come with elevations.
I feel comfortable, I have built this to where if Visionary does want to, and we can make this work, all this, they have products for, all this residential. So I feel comfortable, and if this goes down the road further and further, that yes, this is the product that we can have on here.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna throw a wrench in all of this, but I, I do want to at least say this much about all of this. The code does read, read a specific way, specifically about setbacks and heights and all of that. They design, the development agreement does not override that, does not change those things, the ordinance, you know, so we have to follow what it says, but I'm also gonna say this, I've always been a fan of, but we don't have it, so we should put it in writing. A plan development that we can be more flexible on these types of things, but as it is right now, here's set to, I, because I'm looking at what the code reads, and it says sixteen feet between units.
But wasn't this the?
No, you can't go less than that.
Well, no, but wasn't that whole conversation that we had with Liam when we went over the development agreement was exactly for that reason, that we have the ability to change that in the development agreement? We need to get with Liam, because that, that was my true understanding when we left that meeting.
That's how others have been, the development agreements.
Cause if there, there's no need for a development agreement if they're just going by the ordinance.
Agreement is how it's going to be developed, like, I'm going to develop.
That's a portion of it.
Yeah. But that's not the main meat of a, a traditional development agreement.
Amenities and everything else.
Right, and who's owning everything, maintaining amenities, phasing, and then it goes into detail on design elements and setbacks.
And you're looking at this type of a use.
Design elements you gotta be careful with anymore because of the state rules.
But we are, we are allowed to choose, I mean, not, we're, we're not saying, oh, gosh, it has to be hardy board and rock and all that kind of stuff, you're just saying that these, you know, you have exhibits where Liam said basically we could put pictures in the, as exhibits to say, this is the type of product that you're building, so you don't come in and do a prefab RV park.
Well, I know, well, I think what, one of the biggest things it was is when they put the language in the state was they were requiring different spires and different things.
Yeah, no, that's not the intention.
Architectural features.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so what I'm saying, when you're talking about design standards, you want to be careful when you're doing that.
Yeah, no, that's not what I meant by design standards, I mean, here's a product, here's their base elevation, there's sort of like.
I just wanted to be clear here.
And this is one of the few things I feel like coming outside of this that we, that we can look at, but, um.
Maybe we need to confirm with Liam.
So, you know.
But that was my takeaway from when we sat down with him.
That we can override setbacks?
That it can be, as long as it is specified in that development agreement, that they get the special, because that development agreement is specific to Black.
Big re-planning contract.
Yep, and it's specific to River Blacksmith, and that's where we detail.
That, that overrides any ordinance description of setbacks.
And I would think of it as an addition, but yes, it overrides.
I, 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 I think we need to have another specification because I want to know that.
Yeah.
But that, yeah, and we need to double check that, but that's what I took from that.
Personally, this is me, I'm okay with almost anything as long as it's in writing.
And that's what the purpose of the development agreement is.
We gotta be careful.
Yeah, we gotta.
As long as it can't be legally challenged by someone else.
Right, but that's the purpose of a development agreement, it allows you to give special, special consideration to a development versus only the ordinance, okay, well, we need to talk to Liam. Yes.
Well, look, I'm not gonna give you too many of these types of things, I just feel like this is, and you obviously need to get your.
By the way, I think you know I do like what you're presenting.
I know what you're saying.
But I do want us to be, I've always been, you know, follow the code.
Yeah.
Or change the code, and then follow the code.
Sure.
Which includes the mixed use, and I don't think a development agreement overrides things like setbacks and road widths and.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I know what you're saying, I've also been a part of these where the.
That's the case, and these roads in the apartments aren't gonna work either.
Well, that's where I strongly disagree with that statement, because a development agreement is purposefully for that. Cause you're not gonna line out, you're not gonna line out what's already in the ordinance, you're specifically lining out what isn't, and what they're hold to or held to, that isn't.
I thought it was an addition to rather than.
No, if you read through, like, J D C Ranch, that is design specs, setback, I mean, every piece of that development is there. If you read through any development agreement with any other project, that, that's, that is what it's for, to specify things that are not specific.
Why we decided not to adopt them into ours.
Adopt what?
J D C Ranch, I'm not sure this.
But I'm telling you, you take, you take, and I know I'm fighting on a sword, sword, sword here, but if you take your traditional development agreement, that is exactly what it is for. So we just need to clarify.
Can we check it, Liam?
Yeah, that's something.
Real state law.
Bid, can, can, can.
Agreement, what it says, development agreements ensure that the project implies zoning regulations, land use plans, and other risk point requirements.
Whoa, that doesn't.
No, well, you just screwed up the whole conversation, stop Googling.
I think, I think everybody knows you need to talk to your attorney, counsel, yep, I'm your attorney.
I'm sure we're all in.
So let's go into something that we can't talk about.
Okay. Does that cover single?
And I agree, this is like, but this is a big thing.
This is huge, yeah.
Yeah, I think you're, you know.
Are those the only, um, differences that you're requesting from single family? Okay, I just want to make sure before we move on, if like, if we choose.
It's just this, yeah, we're asking for.
It will affect your lots.
It will.
Will the single family homes help with the requirement from the state for?
Moderate, yeah. Cause we're, they'll technically be smaller lots.
Smaller lots, yeah.
And here's the thing, if, if we're going down this route of he casts a stick to the ordinance, his density doesn't work then.
Well, that's what you just said, yeah.
Yeah, and I think this development agreement, this is, I mean, you can see why you need that, and this type of a situation, there are so many little things that are out of the norm from what you're normally dealing with, and so, yeah, we have to have everything spelled out perfectly, so anybody can look at that and say, yes, it's right here.
Because if you look at the, if you look at the archery, I'll tell, arterial.
Arterial?
Thank you. Roads in the apartments, okay, or the townhomes? Those are much narrower than what the ordinance would allow to.
What, the roads?
Yeah.
But they're private?
Well, I understand it, well, I don't know, I just, you know, fire department's gonna regulate on those anyway.
Right.
So.
Usually those are like twenty-eight feet. Right, but you have to remember, a precedent in one project with the development agreement does not allow it to continue elsewhere. I know, I'm just.
Proceed with precaution.
Yes.
Yeah.
Agreed?
But I, I would say, if we are going to agree to these different setbacks and attached units in a fifty-five home community, we oughta update our ordinances to allow it.
Do we want it elsewhere, though?
Well, the thing we want to do is we want to put it, we would want to word it in such a way in this, in the existing ordinances, which would be a very simple paragraph of saying, attached is allowed in, uh, development, or, uh.
Or in a mixed use?
Mixed use development agreement, with a development agreement.
Or something that any variations will be specifically outlined in the development.
I think that's what I would.
Something, I mean, something, something to be very simply done.
Specifically in writing.
Something that gives you guys the ability to make a decision.
Right. Can come up with that terminology.
Yeah, yeah, and I think it's something that could be done relatively quick. You know, so you could update the fifty-five.
Yeah, do that when in the mixed use.
And then for the single family dwellings, you could address the setbacks as long as it's in a mixed use, and it's addressed in the development agreement.
Hey, you can speed me up.
Well, no, I, no, I'm sorry, the, one of the people I was gonna say.
What's the surface of the trail?
Hold on, Ken, hold on, before we go, I think next time you come, we should talk about open space trails and parks.
Okay.
Cause that's gonna be its own big discussion.
I want to bring up this one thing and get your take on it, we can do that at any time.
Yeah, go ahead.
Right now?
Yeah.
When, okay, the, the trails, the space and everything is obviously very important, um, part of all of this. The only thing that I have, um, changed from the last time you've seen this or any other, um, variation of this you've seen, is right here on the north part of the trail where it comes in off of eighteen hundred, you can see it's highlighted in orange. I'm trying to see if we can get something that is probably more like in a natural landscape, that's not going to need to be so manicured and mowed and everything, one of the problems that we're having as we look at everything is what this is going to cost, and it's, um, been like shockingly expensive, and that, and that's okay, but I was wondering, is there a way that we could have some of this where it actually even takes a little burden off of you, like these portions here, that maybe this isn't so burdensome to take care of, or, or.
What would be the surface, what would you have on?
Well, the, the interesting part is like the other side of this is gonna have like, I, I would see if I could get, and I'll do some more research on this, like some native grasses and some things that don't take as much like water and.
Maybe we can invite Nate and Robbie next, to next work session, because I know that they wanted to own this, so I think that determines a lot of what they'll, I know they won't want to maintain grass and things like that, so we may want their input on what they would accept.
Yeah, and I just didn't want like crap, I, I want to be careful here, I feel like H O A can pay and maintain this. I just worried too that this is gonna end up looking, I'd rather be in some type of a native something, yeah, that looks.
And then there's not, there doesn't have to be an H O A.
The reason I ask you about the surface of the trails, I, I think it has to be hard surface, asphalt, A D A reasons. Cause it has to be A D A accessible.
With native, with.
With, with zero scaping down both sides of it. Which could be gravel.
It could be road base.
For our ordinances.
See.
Uh, I don't think that meets the A D A requirements, because so it's gonna have to be asphalt or concrete.
You mean the trail itself?
No, yeah, the trail, I mean, how wide is?
No, the trail will be a manicured trail, like it'll.
So you're just talking the sides?
No, I'm just talking the sides of the trail. No, no, well, the, the trail will either be like, I've done, I've done a trail in other development that the city actually just really was gunning for about, even though it has, it doesn't go anywhere, and I just, I, I'd like to do a little more research on what that could be, we have asphalt right now, and it just stuffs, um.
Well, there's, there's different, yeah, there's different things that you can do, I understand.
Yeah, so, but yes, for sure, the path would be a nice, clean, smooth, either pat down.
So you gotta have, you gotta have something that's A D A, A D A acceptable.
Now, let me, that's.
Have you seen the pathway around the capital?
I have not.
Basically gravel and trees.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't think.
It is, you can roll along.
Okay, I'm like, I don't, A D A doesn't always have to be asphalt.
Look into what the. Let me look into the A D A, and I'll make sure whatever it is.
That's the only thing I'm saying, it needs to be A D A compliant.
It doesn't need to be asphalt, we have trails in the city that are not even asphalt.
I think the other one is.
That Smith family one is in asphalt, is it?
Yeah.
Is it when you get out, though? Yeah, I was gonna say, that one's not.
Like the north, the northeast corner's not, it goes gravel, gravel.
A hard surface would be like, yeah, the other one.
But then when it shoots out where you, where you go in, yeah, that's all, yeah, no, when you go the other way, and you go like west.
Something that's not as much maintenance.
Hard surface, but it's not, certainly not.
I don't want like dried up grass, it's not getting mowed and looking like, and then just.
But it has horses on it.
I don't want, like, dried up grass, it's not getting mowed and looking like, and then just the, or maintaining it.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe let's get the next one to, cause we're about out of time, so, let's do that, so, we're gonna follow up with Liam and figure that piece out. I think we've hit, what we need to talk about next time is the townhomes and the commercial, and with that, we'll come open space trails and park maintenance.
Are we out of time right now?
Kind of, I've got ten minutes, but do you have a couple other, yeah?
Just, let's talk about the, the, the townhomes, and any questions when it comes to, just, quick ones, townhomes, just so I make sure that I.
The only, the only question I have is your examples you show, show five units, and we only allow four.
Uh, yes, and on here you see four, on the actual, um.
Out here?
No, right here.
On the.
On the, on the plan, I'm just looking at your elevations.
We won't, yeah, we understand it can only be four.
I'm just looking at your elevation.
These guys love doing five and six, obviously it's cost-effective, but this is just the images they had, yeah, we understand we can only go four.
All right.
And I think your townhome pieces, I mean, they're all four-plex buildings, they have good amenities.
Let me point this out real quick, these are rear-loaded, like here, I like the look of the rear-loaded versus the front-loaded. So the only front-load that we're proposing, this is a front-loaded, you can see this, this is a rear. I like, I like that better, but we, because of, because of the, um, commercial here, the ones in orange, and it should've been these down here, too, we have as a front-load, so most of them will be, are, are rear-loaded, and then, but we did on this border here, have them front-loaded, that's just a note, but I, I, we're trying to get as many.
And that doesn't bother me, rear-load our front load.
I, I, it's probably not the biggest deal, I, I want these also to look as good as they can and be, but I live personally like this.
But here's the thing, too, that's nice with, like, the rear-loads, if you're doing them here, it's nice when you're in this open space, you have fronts.
I understand.
You know, you have, it's not just a back of a building, it is a nice.
So we've, we've done a little, uh, front-load along here, that's just something to note, um, what else can we, just, I just wanna.
I think your amenities are awesome.
Yeah.
Tot lots, two tot lots.
Come next time, and maybe it was already in this spreadsheet, why don't you refer to every amenity and who's taking care of it, and. Okay, and you might've, I have, we haven't gone that far, so you might've, okay, okay, perfect, never mind, you're good.
Detention basin be expanded to accommodate development to the west.
Well, that is not.
Yours.
That's a future part. That is, we're going to give that to you, and that's gonna be dedicated.
That's, that will be part of a bigger.
Yeah, uh-huh, because we know what your goals are.
When you say detention basin, are you using it as a major stormwater retention basin, or, you know what I'm saying? I'm trying to figure out what degree you're depending on that for your water, cause that matters.
Yeah.
Cause I like the concept, and then adding on if we have development to the west, but if that's, uh, gonna be any water most of the time, because of your, you know, your drainage, then it's probably not necessarily a good idea.
Almost down into this.
So we can add on the western part of it and close it.
Yeah, so, I don't know.
Do you have any other questions for us that you need to go forward quickly?
I just feel like, I kinda know what the main, I knew that the setbacks would be like, probably one of our.
You gotta figure that out.
Yeah, I knew that was gonna be one of the biggest things, I feel like we've done, I know we have, you know, a lot of work to do still, but I feel like we've done a lot, we've had a lot of communication, we've done these, I feel like we're getting really close, is there anything that you see here?
I think a big discussion is gonna be that open space, who's maintaining what's going in, and committing to those pieces, cause those will need to be outlined.
And we have that, if you go to the amenity open space, you can kinda see that.
And I think that's our next good conversation to.
The one thing that I, that I see, which is just jumping out at me, is you have your parks and tot lots and playgrounds and everything within the townhomes, but there's nothing for the single-family dwellings.
Well, cause it's not a natural way.
Yeah, we, we have a few things here on the path.
It's got HOA on this.
No, I don't, I thought your single-family wasn't an HOA. And they have this little, where the parking lot is.
That, that could, we, what we didn't wanna do is, we didn't wanna put these amenities here to where, it, it's not an HOA, and it's only serving.
Two people.
Yeah, like, just a few people, so we've moved a lot of the amenities here, and some right here, we got like this little.
I mean, once the park comes in, that's gonna address that.
Sure.
I just.
There's some opens, I mean, this is a decent open space here, we could, we could probably talk about, like, a, a pavilion, again, every little thing that I do here, I have to.
No, I get it.
Well, Nate and Robbie were very open about, they don't want a lot to maintain, so we need to be careful in the single-family.
My experience with them with the season, every time I do that, it was like, so hard for them to maintain.
But I'm saying, that's why it wasn't on them to, like, why they deleted everything, or there isn't a lot.
Yes, I'd say.
Yes, for sure, I can see that.
I just want you to know that Nate, that Rob, he.
And we understand that, so we feel like, along this path here.
I, I agree, that's how it works, I maintain.
There used to, it used to be the rule. And there's lots. No, there's, now you can't do it in fifteen.
Okay, so hold on for a second, oh, do you have another question?
What I need to do. Okay. I need my next assignment.
No, I'm gonna ask you a question, that's what I said. Okay, so I want them to come back, um, and have another one of these, so we can discuss truly open space trails, and the commercial component we didn't get to. When are you guys, can, can I throw out some dates for them, and then you tell us if you're here?
I'll do whatever you guys need.
So what I'm thinking is, can we have them maybe, cause the twenty-second, Black Pine's supposed to be coming back to us, which would normally be our session. So, can we do like a Tuesday or Wednesday again, or maybe a Wednesday? How about, oh yeah, how about a Wednesday night?
Well, I can do, that can do that.
Okay, or?
No, next Wednesday.
Oh, Valentine's Day.
Can't do next Wednesday.
Yes, next Wednesday's good.
Where are your priorities, guys?
Wednesday I can do.
What do we do?
Oil, and it's gonna change a little bit, so I really would like to collect most of these before these start floating everywhere. I don't need those.
Um.
I mean, keep what you want, I just don't want, like, these floating out everywhere, and it's all like, so committed to this.
Okay, hold on, we gotta get a time first, and then we can clean all this up. So we have Tuesday the thirteenth.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Um, wait, we could try the week before, we could do either the twentieth or the twenty-first. If we wanted to try that, it would be two weeks.
Guys, tell me, and we'll just come.
I have.
Sir, yes, sir.
Twenty, it'd be Tuesday, so the twenty-first.
Oh, this, you want one of the big dogs?
It'll be in my house.
Next week's kinda tough, and then there's a holiday weekend.
Now, do you realize, the twenty-second, we have, well, we got that twenty.
We have it, yeah.
Back-to-back work sessions.
Yeah, are we okay with that? The other, I just hate to keep putting them off, when really, the, the, the twenty-second is not really even a work session for us. There is a chance that Black Pine won't be able to make the twenty-second, so if they decide to cancel, we can just push them to the twenty-second.
You like us more than Black Pine, right?
Well, we already made the commitment, that was the problem, otherwise I would move them.
Twenty-first, twenty-first, twenty-second.
Okay, so plan the twenty-first at five-thirty. I'll email you.
Sorry, I'll put this down here, but also confirm email.
The twenty-first is tentative?
It's, it's, let's plan on it, if they cancel for us.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, five-thirty. Then that at least keeps us on a roll to keep going. And then I ask every, well, I'll tell them in the meeting.
If you guys could discuss later, just, whatever, anything you wanna pass for me.
And that's what I'm, I'm gonna ask them to look at some of the spreadsheet that you've given.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry, we probably should've given you more time.
You always will. Get on one thing for two, thirty minutes. I can. I'll get some commercial evaluations for next time.
This should be, this is, this should, this one.
Weird, we're gonna be home by four-seven, you'd just be coming to the meeting.
Yeah, and I feel real bad about that.
Here and get prepared. There is a, in the Dropbox, there's a file called Billy Hines, I think it is. He's gonna come up during public comment, so you'll have to pull up what's in there. Thank you, Jeremy. Just cause you said nope. No, just kidding.
Well, if you'd like me to try one, I'd rather.
That would be great if I could have that.
Oh, sorry, I don't know why I just gave you the mouse.
No, this is the newy.
That's what I was just told.
I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that.
I will do the pledge of allegiance, who would like to do the prayer? You wanna lead the prayer? Oh, I was like, you.
I will, I mean, if nobody else will, I will.
Uh, Lyle?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay.
It'd be short and sweet if I do it.
You gotta have it, right?
Need to email that out. Okay. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, will everyone stand for the pledge, and then Lyle will lead us in a prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, number one, in the Constitution, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father in Heaven, we're very grateful for the chance we have to meet this night, please help us as we are going through these, dealing with the city business, that we might do so with integrity, and that we might be able to meet the needs of our residents, and I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Short and sweet, Lyle. Okay, uh, report from the city council, no, sorry, sorry, public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? Come on up. State your name and address, please.
My name is Billy Hines, and I live at twenty-three sixty-one North, twenty-four hundred West, um, just, you box that way.
Okay, so tell us what, so he has reached out about a shed, so he's brought some exhibits, but explain to us, start the whole story.
Yeah, so, when I first got my house plans, and I picked my, where my house was gonna be put on the lot and everything, uh, the information that Nelson Homes had was a typo, that was like, in a weird part of getting into the website for the city, it was like on a shortcut link to the, whatever, so I had kind of set this all up and designed where I wanted everything, before I even had the house built, and I was basically told as I was finishing up, building, finishing my basement and getting it inspected, that I couldn't do that about a year ago, so, I just wanted to bring up, like, I've been on a homeowners association before, I've had to do stuff, like, that people don't always agree with, but, and so I was just trying to bring up something that we actually did with one of ours, and, so what you see there is, my house is a corner lot. So, um, the gazebo is the first little square at the top there, with the fire pit, and you can see a little, there's a, there's a little rectangle there, that, that's kinda where we're gonna put the gazebo, we wanted to put a shed next to it. That shed that you see there is worst-case scenario, that's not necessarily how big I'm gonna build it, but that'd be the worst-case scenario, um, depending on what happens. And basically, what I wanted to do is just show you guys, so on my lot, with all the setbacks, I can't use the other side of my yard to put a shed, so I didn't put one over there. Cause as I was starting to get ready to put the fence in, the house behind me was getting built, and they found out that one of the main water lines actually runs almost per, or like, right next to the edge of my house, it's not in the easement where it's supposed to be. So if I would've built something there, that, I don't know if it was secondary water or primary water, it's, it would've been right underneath, over the water pipes. So I didn't put anything over there, so I planned to move everything to the other side, and the, kinda squirrely line there, that's where all my grass is, so there's curving, that squirrely line is curving, the grass is inside that, the rest of it's landscaping, so all the stuff with the triangles and stuff is all eventually gonna be concrete. So an RV pad, front driveway, and then there's a fence going around the yard, there's already a six-foot fence, so all the thoughts of my, you know, that my shed blocking the neighbor from being able to pull out of his driveway, is, is kind of out the window, that's, he's already can't see when he pulls out the driveway. And he's, he was the one that put the fence in, so I didn't, I didn't put it in first, so.
So your question is on?
I wanna be able to build a shed.
The distance from the road?
Yes, closer from the road, because it, because it's thirty feet on both sides, cause it's a corner lot.
Okay.
And in this particular case especially, it's, actually goes into a cul-de-sac, so, there's not a lot of other reasoning for not letting me build it, I guess.
Well.
But.
Well, so what setback are you asking for? Will you scroll down a little bit?
So, the, I went through a couple different options and was looking, I was hoping, so, on that, I know, um, I don't know if you guys do it, but like, when I was in the homeowners, sometimes you could get away with, like, do away with the easement for utilities, if all the houses are built and there are no utilities. So all the utilities on that side of my house are in the park, there are no utilities in my yard. There's one box, you can kinda see, I put a little circle, right at the back corner of my, no, it's on the other side of the fence line. For some reason, that's actually the centrally boxed box for my neighbor's house.
Is there an easement there?
There's just a standard ten, ten-foot.
Yeah, just the standard easement.
Sidewalk, right?
Yeah, and, and there's nothing on that side.
What is the distance from the shed to the back, back side?
I put, on there, four, I just did the four feet, which I believe is what the.
So it's not four feet from this way?
Yeah, it's both, four feet from both fences. I believe that's what it says in the code right now.
Right, yeah.
Do you know the distance from, um, back of curb to shed?
From curb to shed, that would be, so you'd have, you'd have the four feet, and then, it'd be roughly fifteen feet, almost fifteen feet. Between twelve and fifteen. So I was just trying to give up worst-case scenario, and the other pictures I, I brought, I just wanted to show you what it would look like from the front, it's not, it's not gonna be taller than the house, that's, most barn sheds are less than sixteen feet tall, um, when built, just the standard eight-foot, I'm six-foot-four, so I don't want a six-foot shed to walk into. So I just, that's the next size bigger is a seven-foot door, so, and then, that's just a picture of roughly what they look like, most of them out there look like nowadays, so. I just brought the information to you.
Are we in a public hearing, or we just in?
No, this is just public comment, so he's kind of, he's kind of just looking for direction, do we wanna revisit an ordinance, do we want to talk about it, what do we wanna do?
I think you have the possibility of going around and getting all, a vacation of the easements, from all the utilities.
Yeah.
That would be, I think, probably your, your best shot there, because I know Comcast, when they came through my yard, they were six feet into my yard.
They went under the sidewalk.
We're forgetting the most important part, cause that's kind of secondary, the most important part is, is the setback doesn't reach our ordinance.
Sure.
So we need to consider what, do we wanna reopen the side setbacks on corner lots in our ordinance and revisit that?
We can always revisit it.
And I'd like to, and I'd even, I'd even be willing to bring what we did in Montana, just, just kinda show you guys, I just didn't know what to bring today and how much time I had, so.
Well, it's not even the, I don't think we questioned the product that you're gonna build, it's more of where, what are we setting, and is this gonna continue?
It's our rationale for the setback.
Yeah.
That's what we, and whenever something's brought into question on ordinance, we go back and revisit it, and sometimes, if we can't understand our rationale in the past, and there's a better idea, we'll make a modification, but we certainly, as a courtesy to you, could at least look at what it states now.
Well, and this is gonna.
I brought up, I, I tried to get an idea of what to do, like, how to talk, I actually met with the mayor first, and, like, I told him, there's about fifteen houses just in my neighborhood that have sheds already, I just wasn't gonna build it and wait and see what happens, so, I just wanna make sure.
His original conversation was, hey, other people have done this, where, what am I doing?
So you based it on historically what other people have been allowed to do.
Yeah.
Ordinance currently.
And should we, I'm gonna go ahead and say this, should we readdress ancillary buildings? Meaning like sheds, that are removable, they're not permanent, there's no foundation, as opposed to the other setbacks, which are usually buildings that never move.
Yeah, like shop, big shops, and, cause we had, we had a ancillary building in our neighborhood in Montana, was defined as basically anything under three-hundred square feet, and under, I think it was eighteen or sixteen feet tall, and so that was kind of, that wasn't a living space, it could not be a living space.
We've made many revisions to the ordinances with being prompted by comments from the public, so there's no reason why we can't at least review it.
So let, uh, we'll talk and get a time to review, we have a couple big things on the work sessions for this month, but then I'll let you know when we put it on, and then you're welcome to come, and we can discuss it.
I don't know if this is the time to ask, but I also was interested if there's positions opening on the.
You're about to find out tonight. Thank you. Thank you very much, is there any other public comments? Okay, next, report from city council.
Uh, first, did you all get my email to you?
I know.
Yes. Okay, we got it.
I hope that was helpful for you. City council met, uh, last week, first of February, um, the first item that we actually conducted. The first item that we actually conducted business-wise was a residential license, which was approved for the Saddle Club. This young lady is teaching basic horsemanship to youth and she's using the horse facility that's on North Plain City Road there by the sub pot machines. And that was approved. Conditional use permit was approved for Spencer Knight for warehousing with 25% office space for detailing services or fitness services as allowed by the C2 zone. There was some discussion regarding what consisted of office space and how that was to be defined. The vote was not unanimous, but there was only one descending vote, so it did pass. Conditional use permit was also approved for the accessory building for Adam Lambert to build his personal shop and RV storage, which you guys reviewed that quite well. A site plan was approved for Dirk's Plumbing Supply located on 2000 West, 2908 North. Site plan for the sign for Dirk's Plumbing Supply was also approved at the same location. And there was also some discussion regarding the specific location of that sign. It seemed to me like the planning commission had resolved that issue, but for one reason or another, it wasn't quite clear to one of our council members. And that was approved also with one descending vote. There was an amendment to the sign ordinance as presented by the planning commission and that was approved. Council approved the updates and amendments to the subdivision ordinance, which you guys had been working on. And we met that deadline and, and the council was very appreciative of the work that you put into that and, and getting that, so that we could, you know, have that accomplished within the deadline the state had given us. Which covers the House Bill 174, Senate Bill, excuse me. The council also approved an ordinance to update the fee schedule enumerated in the Far West Municipal Code. Approved a resolution for the application for the land and water conserv- conservation fund. That would help the city with regards to their efforts to obtain RAMP grant as well. Kind of add that to our matching funds. Well, I, I, I'm sure you're pretty much aware of that, but that was approved for us to go after that particular fund grant. Council also approved service agreements for the city's civil and prosecutor's legal services. In other words, we rehired our attorneys in court. Last item of business to approve was the addition of the vision care package for the insurance benefits for city employees. I think that was more of an oversight than anything else and, and by passing that, we got that out of the way and, and that can be offered to the employees. There was a brief discussion regarding the upcoming 2024 budget that we will be reviewing. Keep that in mind if you think, if you as a planning commission think there is something that should be included in the budget, the City Council needs to hear that. We need to have a preliminary budget complete by the first of May so that we can have the final by June with regards to how we're gonna present our next budget. That was pretty much it. Council reported on assignments and we adjourned at 15:00. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our first business item, set a public hearing for February 22nd, 2024 to consider the request to amend the general plan to allow for the M1 zone at 1686 West, 1712 West, Far West Drive. One of those is wrong, but we have, this is all, this is based on what we asked when we met with Steve last week or two weeks ago, requesting some input from the public. So this is a request of us to set this public hearing and get some, get it notified and get some input.
I move that we set the public hearing for February the 22nd.
Okay, motion by Lou, second by Darren. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, 26th, 22nd at 6:30. Sorry I made you come, Steve. I just knew if I didn't, then they'd have questions. Okay, thank you. Okay, recommendation to the City Council, approval or denial of the request for a residential sign for the outdoor garden located at 2395 West, 1900 North. Darren, sorry. Is there an applicant here? Do you wanna come up and tell us briefly what you're doing? State your name and address, please.
Steve Byrd, 2395 West, 1900 North. I feel like most of us are aware of what's going on there. It's kind of been long coming, just looking to get a sign up there with the farm location. So people know they're in the right spot and what we're doing. And so I've submitted the forms and everything that show details of the design and where we're planning on putting it.
There any questions?
Yeah, I have one, Steve. When I dropped the application off to your home, I sent, I dropped off also a copy of the ordinance. In your application, it says that the conditions is permanent, but in the ordinance, it reads, just in part of, where's that?
Last sentence.
Last sentence, okay, sorry. Signs shall only be posted when products are being sold. So in other words, when you're in business, you can have the sign up. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we sell product year round.
Oh, do you really? Oh, I did not know that. Okay, well.
At least you know in the future, if you down for a season, it has to come down.
I guess the benefits of a greenhouse, right?
That's, that was my only question.
You're selling Christmas.
Perennials to landscapers, believe it or not, just sold some week ago, so.
Really, they're starting to, oh yeah, I forgot, you wholesale do them too, yeah.
It's not snowing there.
I'd say the ground's soft, yeah. Okay, any other questions for him?
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, there are none. Is there a motion?
Yeah, motion, recommend City Council reapprove the request for residential sign for the outdoor garden.
Motion by Jason. Second by Greg. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, next week, City Council, 6:30.
By the way, Steve, I like your sign. That looks good.
The one, did it have a scale on it?
It was, no, he complied with the height and the size.
I just say that because last City Council, one of the City Council members mentioned something about a scale. So I wanna make sure you're good to go next week.
Yeah, he's done it already.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Next, recommendation to City Council, appointment of the planning commission chair and vice chair.
I recommend we, we maintain the existing chair and vice chair for the planning commission, Geneva being the chair and Lyle being the vice chair.
I would second that with one condition, that they're willing to serve.
I didn't give him a choice.
I am.
Hey, I had a lot of hesitation going into this, but it's probably been like the funnest year on the planning commission.
Well, I got something to say.
Mainly because I'm in charge. Just kidding.
Since Geneva's become the chair, I feel like that there's been a lot more open communication from the front end meeting, development meetings and things like that. I just feel like there's been a lot more communication and cohesiveness between us, all of those members. And I don't think it would have happened if it wasn't for Geneva sitting in that chair. So that's my two cents.
And we've accomplished a lot.
Yeah, we have.
And Lyle has been a great vice chair, so I'm great with Lyle continuing as long as he wants to.
I'm excited to work with you, thank you.
Okay, that was quick. Motion by Greg, second by Lou. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, next, we have recommendation to the City Council, reappointment of Lyle Earl, Greg Baptist, even a Spanish. And Darren Roylance. Before we start any discussion, are the three of you wanting to continue? Because I don't, you know, I don't want you to be voted if you're like, hey, I don't.
I would like to.
Lyle, you're already vice chair, so.
I already, I already got voted in as the.
Is there any comments, motions?
I will make a comment. I think all three have made a valuable contribution to the planning commission. And I would recommend their reappointment.
Motion by Lou.
I'll second it.
Second by.
I guess I can't second myself, sorry.
I'll second it then.
By Jason. I am just gonna make one comment. I'm, I'm great with all of them. I, I think you guys are all huge assets to the planning commission and have been involved and have great knowledge. I just want everyone to remember that, you know, we're all on the same team. And when we meet with people, our job is to help the community and help the citizens and, you know, attitudes and the way we speak to people and all those things. We just, we're a representation of the city. So I wanna make sure we're all, you know, we're here for the citizens. So that's all I ask. So all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Yeah. Yep.
Guys, you're moving forward with those that are already on. I want to go ahead and basically reach out to these other folks that are interested. Keep coming, because eventually these guys get tired.
Yeah, exactly. And that, and that, to that note, I mean, just pay attention to our meetings. Cause we have 5:30 work sessions every, every week or every other week. And our meetings end like this, and there's always committees and things to get involved in and needs in the city, seriously. So whether you're coming to a planning commission meeting or a city council meeting, there's always places for people and all of that. So stay involved, definitely. Okay, next, approval of the minutes dated January 25th, 2024.
I recommend we approve the minutes dated January 25th, 2024.
Motion by Greg. Second by Jason. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Report on assignments. Jason?
Uh, nothing this time.
Okay. Lyle?
Nothing.
Whoa, that's weird. Usually I gear up for you.
Well, I was the, I'll say this, I was the only one that attended the first Monday park meeting that wasn't scheduled. I thought it was scheduled and I showed up anyway. I got a few things done, but still kidding, kinda, anyway. But we, we're having a, we're having a park meeting on Monday. We're still working on the grants. We've got till, we got till probably, we got March 1st to finish up that, the grant for the playground and stuff. But other than that.
Perfect.
We're good.
Lou? Greg? Darren?
Nothing today.
Okay, little Greg is sick, so, and Brandon had a wedding, I believe. Okay, for my few things, first off, I know we've had a long month and a half. So I appreciate everything in the extra work sessions and making it work and helping with the few, you know, the few things we've been tasked, like the first mixed use and our subdivision ordinance are heavy things and you guys have stepped up, so I appreciate that. The next thing is the legislative committee, legislative policy. Do you just want them to watch it, the LPC? Is there, do you, do you want multiple people or a member or what do you want? Yes, explain to me so I can either task or help.
The city can have three voting members. Currently, they're defined as myself, Tim and you.
I was saying, you signed me up at one point. I still have the signup email, I just never opened it.
You never got what?
You, you signed me up at one point and you sent me like a signup email and I still have it.
No, you're, you're on the list. You don't sign up, I put you on the list. So you are a voting member right now, you just haven't been attending.
Yeah, I know.
So I guess go, continue with your, but yeah, we have three voting members. Of course, anybody can, it's a public meeting, can participate and, you know, watch it. Cause it's good, cause they're doing stuff down there, trust me. It's coming at us and if we at least hear about it, it's good. But at least with three voting members, we can help them, the league guide whether they are advocates or if they're neutral or opposing any given legislation. And we vote for that, so.
So the ask kind of, so it's Mondays at noon, right? Or one, noon? Okay. The ask is, I don't always have the ability, especially on a Monday, to attend at noon. So is there someone, do you want like just one straight person that's kind of over it or?
It's up to you, you're the voting member, but if you don't want to be the voting member, I would appreciate a voting member.
Okay. So if someone would like to take my voting position? It's on Zoom, so you just watch it. But it's, it's.
I can give you guys the schedule. I think it's on Tuesday in a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay. If you'll send out the schedule and then maybe the next time, well, there's gonna be a one in between that.
There'll be a link for the.
Okay. Cause I know Monday I won't, I won't be in town, so I won't watch it.
Hour, hour and a half.
Okay, I was just curious.
Well, and maybe, maybe do you, and can it be a different person or does it need to be the same?
One voting member voting, not voting members or anybody who can attend.
Okay. So maybe, maybe Lyle and I talk about it, but it sounds like you have some interest in watching it. But maybe you wanna watch it not as a voting member, so you're not, if you, you know, if work comes up in the middle of the day, you don't.
I can, I can make that schedule work, the noon to one.
Do you want to do that?
I wouldn't mind doing that.
Okay, I like it. Then I will switch, or you will. You will switch voting member to Jason.
Yeah, I have a long line and I'll.
Do that. And then we'll, he'll send out the link, so if you want to watch and it, and attend, anyone can. Jason, don't make any stupid, stupid decisions, okay? Just kidding.
It's would be useful for that person to.
Report, yeah, that gives you something to report back. And if at any time, cause I know you work full time, if it becomes too much, we can switch. So don't, I don't want anyone to feel like they're stuck with a task that they don't want. I was expecting a, I know, I was expecting a 10 minute one, so I appreciated it, it was good. Now you're good.
As far as, they are also recorded and you can view them later too.
Yeah.
So if you can't make noon, you can always, of course, you can't vote unless you're in the meeting. But all of us can attend at any time. And that's what they're talking about, all these things about an acre acre and all this other kind of stuff that's going on. You can at least hear where the, where the league is trying to help guide the legislature. And every time, and I say this a lot, talk to your legislators, legislators. Call them, text them, email them, whatever it takes, let them know how you feel. Matt Quinn, I think it's all Matt. Buxton is our senator.
Okay, will you email out the link and everything and then?
I will.
He'll get it signed up?
When he puts on, there's, the league also puts together a pretty good PowerPoint presentation along with it. Highlighting some of the things that are being discussed, Bill. So he can review all of that, print it out or email it to you or whatever.
Yeah, and you can just, that can become a reporting assignment, so. Okay, I like it. Then just a reminder that not next week, but the week after, on the 21st, we have River Blacksmith. I always get that name wrong. And then the 22nd, we have the black pine work session, so.
Both at 5:30.
Both at, uh, yeah, both at 5:30, cause there are ones before, yep, both at 5:30. And I'll email you reminders as well, but, and then that's all I think I have. We haven't had development meeting in a while and we're just chugging away at getting through this mixed use. And then we'll get back to the C2 stuff and getting through black pine stuff, so we're getting there. So that's all I have.
Geneva, will you let me have two minutes?
You have two minutes. Just kidding, you have as many, as many minutes as you want.
I do that in legislature, they, you know, have timer up there. You have to ask for. No, so what I'd like to say is I appreciate everybody up here. But one thing that we need to seriously consider is relooking at our general plan. Because one thing we're doing a lot of recently is reactive amendments to the general plan. Maybe we need to back up and look at the general plan again, even though we just got done with it. But that was actually two years ago, if you think about it, almost three.
And the market has very much changed.
Things change a lot and we should look at, because we have other alternatives. We also have other possibilities and other requirements that have happened since the last time we adopted the general plan. For instance, if we do choose, cause we're gonna have to on the southern end, if we choose to go with something more, I don't even know what to call it. They call it that weird tech thing zone that's not M1, like it's not commercial.
Yeah, industrial or not, sorry, information technology.
Yeah, kind of a weird name for what's going on there, but we should look at those things. We should look at those things and look at them seriously, as well as some of the things we gotta do with housing, cause housing like, you brought up the other night. We have to address housing and you know what's not warehousing? Or I mean, what is not? Housing is warehousing.
And I like that note, cause I think, I'm hoping that the housing committee now will kind of spear some of, okay, this is what we need. Here's what we're seeing and that can help us say, okay, we need to incorporate that.
Yeah, and we're, we're gonna do that. David's all over that. We kind of want to let the legislature get done with what they're gonna do before we start addressing it. Cause we don't wanna address too much before they change our minds.
This, this is probably a good thing too, because our last time around on the general plan. We spent a lot of time just consolidating the documents.
It was a complete overhaul.
You know, a- and now we can focus on specifics rather than cutting out the hay that we don't need in the documents, so.
Right.
A lot of it wasn't, didn't even.
Look seriously as.
Cut out crap.
And look serious at the future zoning, at what that should look like, right? Cause we get to decide our future for now. Say for now, for a reason.
For one more year, maybe. Okay, that's awesome, thank you. Okay, last motion.
Why shouldn't we go home?
Thank you, Jason. Motion by Jason, second by Greg, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
I think it would be very useful, I can do that if I wanted, to actually read the, out from the city of leagues and towns. How, what is the purpose of a public hearing? Citizens ask questions. Nobody votes, we don't, we're not pulling opinions or anything else. Then when they leave that meeting, they understand that when we discuss a work session.
Yeah.
Nobody's lobbying.